Good morning, everybody, and welcome to, uh, welcome to Neill County's annual organizational meeting. So we'll call the meeting to order at 8:30 a.m. here on October 28th, 2025. As the first order of business on the agenda paper is the adoption of the organizational meeting agenda. So if the agenda is satisfactory to the group, I'd be looking for somebody to make a motion to approve the agenda. I saw, um, councillor Penner?
I just need to, okay, I'd, I'd move to make that motion. I, I'd make the motion to adopt the minutes as are the agenda as presented.
Thank you, councillor Penner. Uh, is there any discussion, any deletions, additions that anybody's looking at? Seeing none, um, we'll call it to question all those in favor of adoption of the agenda. Please raise your hand if you're in favor. That is carried. Anybody opposed? Seeing none. Okay. The next item of operations are the voting procedures for today's meeting. So throughout the, uh, the meeting, uh, council will be determining positions of Reeve, deputy Reeve, as well as a number of committee positions, both that council will be sitting on and members at large. So the voting, the suggested voting procedures, uh, some of which come from the procedural bylaw, is that if there is more than one councillor nominated for either the Reeve or deputy Reeve positions, a motion needs to be made to approve the use of secret ballot. We've done that in the, in the bylaw. Uh, ballots are destroyed at the end. So if there are more than one, uh, we'll distribute, we'll distribute ballots, uh, you'll fill them out, they'll be counted, and then a winner declared. If there is no, if no individual receives a majority of the, of the votes, then we would drop the, the individual who received the lowest number of votes and conduct the vote again. So with, uh, with that, and the last item in that regard is related to our committees. If we have, uh, more individuals interested than there are spots on the committee, uh, we would use the ballot format as well. So with that, is there any, any concerns, questions, or anything related to the voting procedures for today's meeting? Seeing none. So with that, I'd look for a motion to approve of the, the voting procedures for today's meeting. Councillor Hoppins?
I so move to, uh, accept the voting procedures.
Thank you, councillor Hoppins. All those in favor? Carried unanimously? Thank you. The next item, establishment of the municipal office. Uh, there is a portion of the MGA that indicates municipalities need, need to establish their main place of business. Uh, we do this, it's Neill County's practice that we've done this each year, just to have that, uh, just to have that, uh, available easily if, uh, if it ever comes up. But looking for a motion to establish, uh, this office, this location is the county's main office. Councillor Whitstock?
I would move the council establishes the municipal office at 1600 Second Street, Northeast Three Hills, Alberta.
Thank you, councillor Whitstock. Are there any, is there any discussion on that? Seeing none. All those in favor? That is carry. Any opposed? Seeing none. That is carried. Thank you. And the last, uh, my last order of business as chair is to oversee the election of Reeve. So at this point in time, uh, what I'll do is I'll call for nominations for the position of Reeve. Um, I'll do that three times. If there is somebody, if you'd like to nominate somebody, uh, please raise your hand, indicate that. Once you've made the nomination, I'll ask that individual if they're willing to let their name stand. Uh, and if they are, then they'll be part of the, part of the ballot if there is one, or claimed if there is not. Uh, but I will call for nominations, uh, multiple times. So with that, I would ask the group, are there any nominations for the position of Reeve? Councillor Penner?
Uh, I'd like to nominate councillor Whitstock.
Councillor-
As to the position of Reeve.
Thank you. Councillor Whitstock, do you accept that nomination?
Uh, yes, I would, Mr. CEO.
Thank you, councillor Whitstock. I'll ask a second time. Are there any nominations for the position of Reeve?
I'm not here to nominate any at this point in time. I, I'm kinda questioning a little bit on procedure, not that the, the procedure's wrong. I just don't know these people well enough to stand up in front of my people and say, "I vote for so-and-so." Nobody has really told me anybody, uh, we've met each other, we sat in a room together, but I don't know the position of people. How could I vote for a Reeve when I don't know where they stand on the issues that are important to them? I, I have to say, maybe we should, before we go into the vote, set it up and say where our positions are, so we know who we are voting for.
Uh, one of the things that we need to also do is that, uh, I think that we shouldn't be voting for these, uh, the Reeves and deputy Reeves for, uh, long term. I think we can put something in there that says that these guys are either three months or six months in terms, until we understand who these people are and what they do.
The, are there any other questions before? Yeah. So with, with the comments that were, that were made, um, election of the Reeve and deputy Reeve is outlined as part of the organizational meeting. So it is, it is part of the process, legislative process, that that be done, that be done today. Um, I do understand that there is some, uh, you're right, uh, councillor, councillor Anderson, as a new council, uh, the, the members of you don't know each other well, for the most part, I would, I would suggest. So that is, uh, that is a challenge, and I think that's a, that's a recognized challenge. Uh, the Reeves' position is, is nominated until the next organizational meeting, so this is a process that council goes through each year. Um, each year, we have this one, uh, the organizational meeting, it's a unique one, happens once a year, where we go through, fill the committees, uh, the Reeve is re-elected. Um, and I say re-elected, it doesn't mean it's the same person each time, but the Reeves' term is for, is for a year, and so that is, that is outlined. The Reeves' position is, one, to chair the meetings, uh, to act as the spokesperson for the, for the county, and basically to have the meetings flow through their processes. So when they take over the, the chairpersonship of the meeting, it's to guide the group through the, through the items of business. In terms of their positions on specific issues, uh, the Reeve is no more or less powerful than any other member of council sitting around the table. Everybody's vote is equal in that, in that regard. So there is a, their specific positions, um, actually aren't part of how they chair the meeting, or anything of that, of that nature. When they perform their spokesperson role, they are spokesperson for council as a whole. So even in a position where council voted, um, or made a decision that was counter to the Reeves' personal opinion or position, as spokesperson, the Reeve still conveys the position of council, not their own position. So that is the, that's that spokesperson role. The other function of the Reeve is to maintain decorum in the meetings, to have, um, and basically to be, uh, guide the, the check-ins that council has, to assess, for council itself to assess how you're, how you're functioning as a council. So that is, in the, in our system, um, in ours being municipalities in Alberta, uh, not just Neill Counties, that's the position of the chief elected official, which is what we call Reeve.
So there is no, there is nothing that we can do that says it can be three months or six months, it has to be a year?
The, if that is, uh, if that's something that council wants to entertain, that's, uh, we'd, we'd have to double-check that. Normally, they're appointed for a year, we'd have to go back and do the consultation, but if that's something that council wants to entertain, then I'd suggest that we take a break and that we double-check that in the legislation. Okay, so through the, through the, to the assembled, so the Municipal Government Act, Section 150, Election or Appointment of a Chief Elected Official, uh, does indicate that the chief elected official of a city or town is to be elected by a vote to the electors of municipality unless the council passes a bylaw specifying the term of employment. So there is a, we do have a bylaw in our procedural, our procedural bylaw that says that we appoint the Reeve and deputy Reeve, uh, for the ensuing one-year period.
That's your bylaw?
The county's bylaw, council's bylaw. You could change that eventually, if that was brought back and there were three, and it was, uh, given three readings to an amended bylaw. Yes. So at this point in time, I'd ask, what is the, the will of council? So we are in a phase of taking nominations for the position of Reeve. Our bylaw currently indicates that they're appointed for a one-year term. Councillor McCook?
Do we have to nominate Reeve from, or different Reeves, or, uh, different people right away? Or is there a vote on one, and then it goes to another call?
Uh, through, in response to that question, councillor McCook, uh, we take all the nominations first, pardon me, we take all the nominations first, and then it's election among those nominated. Go ahead, councillor McCook.
Are you calling for another nomination?
I will be. Further comments? Okay, for a second time, I'll ask if there are any further nominations for the position of Reeve. Councillor McCook?
I vote, or I'd like to see Laura Lee Cunningham.
Councillor Cunningham, do you accept that nomination?
Um, I appreciate the nomination at this time. I will decline. Thank you, though.
I ask a third time, are there any now, further nominations for the position of Reeve?
Yes, I would like to nominate Lonnie McCook.
Councillor McCook, do you accept that nomination?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'll call a la, a last and final time, are there any nominations, any further nominations for the position of Reeve? Seeing none, I will close the, I will close nominations and we'll distribute the ballots accordingly. Thank you, council. So through the election, now name Counselor Lonnie McCook as Reeve Okay, at this point in time, the process for our seating arrangements is, the Reeve takes the chair right at the head of the table. So I'd ask for that switch to occur. Thank you, members of council. That concludes my portion of the meeting to chair. So with that, I will turn over the chairing duties of the meeting to Reeve McCook.
Thank you. I've got too many pieces of paper in front of me. I gather we're going for the election of Deputy Reeve. I call for nominations.
I will nominate Counselor Hoppins.
Counselor Hoppins, do you allow your name to stand?
Yes, I will.
Thanks. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Counselor Whitstock for Deputy Reeve.
Counselor Whitstock, do you allow your name to stand?
Yes, I would.
We'll go to the vote, correct?
For nominations to, nominations to cease.
Nominations to cease, pardon me.
I move to cease nominations.
Thank you. All in favor?
Having tallied the ballots, I'd like to congratulate Counselor Hoppins on his election as Deputy Reeve. Yes. In just a moment, we'll, as we're doing the, as we're doing the switch, we'll administer the official oath.
Were concluded on, were concluded on the nominations, or are they, okay?
I just want to stand.
Pardon me? Yes.
I, Richard Hoppins, swear that I diligently, faithfully, with the best of my ability execute, according to law, the office of Deputy Reeve for Neill County for a term of one year to expire after 2026 organizational meeting. So help me God.
Okay, I guess we'll go on to the next thing on the agenda, that's seating arrangements. That's drawn by, what?
Numbers.
Numbers? Musical chairs?
Yeah.
Everybody good? Sitting, sitting where you want? Not where you want?
Every year, we're told.
Yes.
Yeah.
Regular council meeting dates, 2026.
Through, Mr. Chair, the regular council meeting dates are established each year at the organizational meeting. So these are the dates that council will regularly meet throughout the year for their normal, you know, what we refer to as their normal business meetings, so their regular council meetings. Historically, and as per the procedural bylaw, these are outlined as the second and fourth Tuesday of each month, so that those dates have been put in there. And by giving notice of that, when municipalities do that, then there's not a requirement to specifically advertise those dates, because they're already established. We do, of course, advertise those dates on the website and other methods. But the exceptions to that, that the counties historically put in place, and council determine if you want to continue that or not, is in July and August, the county has traditionally dropped down to one council meeting a month instead of the two. That's just to give a bit more of a break in the summer. The other one that the council usually doesn't go, doesn't hold, is the second meeting in December, is that one generally coincides either very close to Christmas, or on the break after. So historically, council has also approved the meeting dates without that second December meeting taking place as well. So of course, council's decision as to when you have those, but that is recommended the second and fourth Tuesday for the regular meetings.
Okay, any discussion on that? I know I have some concerns. One of the concerns that I have is, we're farmers. So if we had meetings in May and stuff, I mean, the way we're working, if we get this under control, we can probably get away with less meetings when we're seeding also, or harvesting. Any concerns? Any thoughts?
The only comment that I'd make is that I'm, and I completely knew this, so I have no, no firsthand knowledge of it, is that regardless of whether we're farming or harvesting as farmers, there's a certain amount of county business that has to be dealt with.
That's correct.
At times, so.
That's correct, but a lot of it, a lot of it can be taken out, too. A lot of it isn't pressing, when you start looking at things. We have to look at the whole picture here. I think we need to discuss a bunch of stuff prior to this, too, on agendas and stuff like that. I mean, what I see so far, and this is just me throwing stuff out, is that it's pretty easy, it's pretty easy for administration and staff to put out an agenda that, for what they think we need, rather than what we need. Our concerns?
My only concern, Reeve McCook, would be, I know, just sitting here for four years, there was some meetings that we were here till four or five o'clock. So I just would be a little bit concerned that the less meetings we have, we might be in for some really long, long meetings. But like, would there be a thought, maybe, to keeping it this way for this year, and maybe re-examining it, maybe next year? Would that be something?
One of the concerns that I had from, from, or from the ratepayers, was that this council of the whole is just another meeting where we get paid, and then we go into the council meeting and whip off an approval. And all of a sudden, all there is is just a section of approved or dis, approved or not approved items going into the paper. I do believe, and you know, I know where you guys are coming from, but I mean, this is a council, council meetings should be where we discuss everything, not community, or not the prior meeting. We should be doing it right in a council meeting, and if it goes till five o'clock, it goes till five o'clock. These are thoughts, right? But I mean, I'm relating on what ratepayers have told me. And that's something that we need to look at and, or discuss, because that's on the table. Law?
Yes, this is something that we can agree to the meeting dates as they are right now, and then something we can change at a later time, you know, in, say, in the next month, if that's what, if that's what council wants.
Chair, Mr. Whitstock?
Well, I look at these dates that we have scheduled, they are second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. There are a few months here where we only have one meeting. I know the months that we've only had one meeting, there's been a lot of stuff that's been jammed into them. When I look at these dates, May the 12th and the 26th, maybe there will be issues with putting in the crop, or maybe we'll get a rain.
That'd be nice.
But to say right now that we're only going to have one meeting in May because of, or because of seeding, which date are we going to lose here? I think what we should probably look at is making sure the continuity of council goes through. Your comment about committee of the whole meetings, the reason we have committee, have had committee of the whole meetings is because there are some things that come up that are very, a lot of information, a lot of discussion has to be had. And I know that we've had committee meetings where we've discussed probably an hour, two hours, three hours on one subject. To do that in a council meeting, to fulfill all the discussion in a council meeting, that would drag that council meeting out to a long time. So I mean, that is why we use committee of the whole. We don't use committee of the whole just to have a meeting. That's not what they're for, that's not what they're intended to do. And sometimes, we can cancel a committee of the whole if we don't have anything coming up. We do need 24 hours' notice, but that can be provided. I think for this, for this year, I think I would be more in favor of adopting the number, the meetings that are on the calendar. As long as we have quorum, we can go ahead with a meeting. But that being said, I don't want to get us in a position where we're here for some, for meetings that are dragging out, dragging out, and, I mean, that's not what council's all about either. So I would, I would recommend that we actually go ahead and, and have these meetings as scheduled. Those are my thoughts. I could make a motion to that, and then we can put it on the floor. So the recommended motion that I would be prepared to make is that council approve the scheduling of the 2026 organizational meeting for Tuesday, okay, for Tuesday, October 27th, 2026, and hold all regular council meeting dates on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month, with the exception of July, schedule one meeting for July the 21st of '26, August, schedule one meeting for August 25th, 2026, and December, schedule one meeting for December 8th, 2026. for December 8th, 2026.
All in favor? Or discuss, pardon me, any discussion?
Do we need a second or a person?
No.
I would tend to agree with Counsel Woodstock. I think we can vote on these dates, and should we have the opportunity to cancel if we need to, we can cancel within 24 hours' notice and carry on with our regular business.
One thing that I was going to say is, that's fine, that's great, and everything like that, but we, we should discuss the council of the whole thing again on something, some other term or other time. Any other discussion? Motion on the floor? Oh, Lo. All in favor? Well, look what's up next. Committee of the whole meeting dates 2026. Comments, concerns? Lo.
I think there again, maybe we should accept the dates as they are right now and, and again, have that discussion, table that discussion for later.
Okay. Any other discussion? Oh, Lorley.
Yeah, just, Mr. Hogan would have to remind me, but like, I think, you know, we were pretty diligent with our time in the last term, and, but I think there was, maybe twice, we canceled cow meetings over the course of four years. So if, administration is very good, if there's not enough to put on the agenda, we definitely do go the route to cancel. So it's not like we come into a cow meeting for one, for one item. And it, it is nice to have that ability, to have that discussion, whether it's, you know, we've had a horseshoe canyon and some topics that do take quite a bit of conversation. So to have that ability at a cow meeting is, is helpful.
Okay. One of the concerns I have is, is committee of the whole, is that the way that it's presented, like, is there minutes being taken? Are the minutes being taken and presented to the public? Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Reeve McCook. The committee of the whole meetings are, there are, they are actual formal meetings. They are a bit more informal than council, and that's kind of their purpose, is so they're, but at the end of the day, there are minutes taken from those meetings that are approved at, that are approved by this group, and those meetings are live streamed, just like this one is.
The only, like I said, the concern that I had is that when these go into the paper, committee of the whole, or the next council meeting, it's always just a unanimous, it, there's no real thought, or, or, I should say, no real, provided information how a counselor is voting or acting, or not voting or discussing, I guess is my concern. It's either passed unanimous or defeated kind of deal, and we've got to change, I think we have to change that. Counsel, the ratepayers want to see more information on that rather than that. Concern, that's, that's a concern.
I do agree with the, I'm sorry, Reeve, in that regard, that openly and honestly is what I ran on, and I want people to know where I'm at, where I'm at. I think we would have a lot more people involved in our decisions if they actually thought people were listening to them.
Mr. Woodstock.
There is the opportunity to show your vote at any council meeting. You ask for a recorded vote, then it's gone around the table, all members of council record their vote, their vote is recorded in the minutes. So that opportunity does exist. As for the, yeah, I mean, I, the reason of committee of the whole is there is so we can have a more fulsome discussion, because there will be some, some things that are going to take longer than what you can provide, or than what you can possibly do in a council meeting. You're talking about changing the, the schedule for our council meetings and committee of the whole meetings. I think that would be a perfect opportunity to have that in a committee of the whole meeting, because discussing it in a council meeting is going to be, it'll take up a lot, a lot of time.
Yeah, okay. And, and any other concerns? I, I, like I said before, I don't think I'm in disagreement with coun, council of the whole, I'm in disagreement of how the minutes are presented after that, where you go into the, the council meeting, and it's, you get a number, and it just says passed unanimous or whatever. That's what I'm concerned about. So we have to get that information out to the public. Mr. Hogan.
Through Mr., through Reeve McCook, the, the committee of the whole function, so there, the agendas for committee of the whole, the minutes for committee of the whole are done the same way as a regular council meeting. So an agenda about what's on committee of the whole does go out to council ahead of time, it's posted for the public ahead of time, in the exact same manner that, that regular council meetings are. The minutes are present, are adopted in the same way as regular council meetings are. The purpose of the committee of the whole is to allow council to, to meet and to have those larger, maybe more in-depth discussions, or really in those direction-setting capacities. So for example, if we've got, if councils indicated that there's a certain policy that you want developed, or there's something, then there's multiple options or directions that policy can go. Oftentimes, that discussion's held at committee of the whole, so that you can provide that clarity to us as administration, so that we can go, you know, if you're, if policy could go direction A or direction B, we can ask council, do you want policy to go direction A or direction B? And we do that before we go and draft the policy, so that we're not wasting a lot of time going direction B when you want us to go direction A. And so at committee of the whole, a lot of times, we'll get that direction, we'll get amendments to anything that's coming forward, and then we'll go back and prepare a finalized version that comes back to council. The item that comes back to council is a regular business item that is discussed by council and determined by council, the, the way you would any other item. So generally, if the motion that you're going to vote to approve something, or to send it back, or to not approve it, whatever the, ever the case may be. So the, the committee of the whole has those, those discussions, and then makes a recommendation to council. At the council meeting, council can take, council can carry on that direction, or if there's been different information or discussion that comes up, they can alter it as well. So that, when it gets to council, that is a, still a discussion piece that the, that this body has. The, the decision that comes out of that is what's recorded in the minutes.
Any other concerns or discussion?
I guess the only comment that I would make is that the few boards that I sat on, and they're not at this level, in general terms, when you report how a vote goes, it's accepted or it's rejected, and you may, it may say a majority voted, well, a, a motion is either passed or it's, or it's, or it's declined. In general, at the public level, at, after that point, the council is supposed to be showing a unified outlook, because we are, we are a democratic group. I mean, we voted on the decision as a whole, if the motion was passed, then I, from what I'm understanding of the meetings that we've attended so far, the council is supposed to present a unified voice after these meetings as far as what the decisions we've made inside council. So I'm not sure what would be gained, if I'm understanding correctly what you're suggesting, posting in public that, you can post how a vote was, what the, what the decision was of the vote, but if it was passed by a majority of the council, which it would have to be, then that becomes a council decision. I'm not sure what you would gain by, by saying it was four, four, or three opposed, or five, four, and two opposed. I, I'm not sure what, what that gains the council in general.
Okay, I think we're overkilling this. What, what it is, what it is, is that, like I said, the ratepayers want to see something in the Three Hills Capitol that isn't a number and says passed unanimous, that's it. Okay? I, I, we, we can go on with the committee of the whole, I don't think, I think that's, I understand where that's coming from. But when you do a committee of the whole, and you make these decisions, and then you go into the council meeting the next day, or whenever, and then you pass it, it gets reported. So I guess what the, what the thought was, or what the concern is, is when our ratepayers read the paper, they don't want to see numbers such and such passed unanimously. They want to know what was, the discussion was. So that's something we can discuss at another time, or whatever. Right now, like, we're, we're sitting here on the committee of the whole meeting dates, and, and I think that's fine. And I think we should ask for a, a motion on that, or if there's no discussion, further discussion. Counsel Hoppins.
I make a motion that we approve the committee of the whole dates every third Tuesday of the month, and no cow meetings during the summer months. And those meetings would be January 20th, '26, March 17th, 2026, January, or July 21st, 2026, and August 18th, 2026. And December meeting held on December 1st of 2026.
Yes.
So just in regards to the motion, Mr. Hogan, would there be anything we would need to put in that motion to say that we would cancel a meeting if there wasn't enough on the agenda, or is that just something that administration does as part of their role?
Through the chair, there, there's nothing that we need to put in the motion. That has been the practice, if we recognize that agenda's going to be really light. As you know from the last term, I think there was probably a couple of those meetings each year that we canceled. And I say we canceled, that we recommended to council, that you canceled, because there was just a lack of items to be placed on that agenda, so there was no value in having a meeting.
Mr. Woodstock.
Ultimately, it comes down to council as to whether or not we have a committee of the whole, and we as council put that material onto the committee of the whole. So it is a, it is our responsibility, if we want something on committee of the whole, that is where we place it, and that's, that's where it goes. So everything that's done in committee of whole is a recommendation to council, so we have the ability to discuss, gather further information, bring stuff forward, provide a direction for administration, and then it goes to the council meeting for affirmation. If you're talking that you want more meat to, to the minutes, I don't know what, I don't know what the regulations are on putting meat into the minutes. Maybe Mr. Hogan can explain further.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan.
Through, Mr. Chair, the, the county's current practice for producing minutes is in, is, is government best practice for municipalities. The minutes are to be recorded without comment, without a lot of the, that, it, they really are, their purpose is to record the discussion. So the minutes that we do as we do them are best practice. The county does release council highlights that are, that do contain a bit more information than what, what the minutes do. The agenda packages that are publicly available also record the background to the decision. And Neill County does live stream all of its committee of the whole and council meetings, so the live streams are available in real time, but they also live on the internet forevermore, so they can always go back to and be referred to as well. So that is the, I guess that's the, the information regarding the, regarding the minutes.
Okay. One of the things, one of, that's great, let's, we need some, I think we need to have, we'll have more discussion on, on that particular deal with the minutes. Right now, we, a motion on the committee dates has been set forth. Any more discussion? All in favor? Municipal planning committee meeting dates 2026. Counsel Woodstock.
Hey, I'd like to put it on the floor, so, sorry, I got my mic off. I would move that council approve the scheduling of the 2026 Municipal Planning Commission meetings on the fourth Thursday of each month in 2026, with the exception of the January meeting to be held on January 29th, 2026, and the December meeting to be held on December 17th, 2026.
Thank you. Any discussion? Concerns? Mr. Woodstock.
The reason that we need to have these municipal planning dates set is because there is a time limit from the time an application is presented for, to the planning department for us to have to deal with. So this gives us the exact times when we're going to have these meetings, and they meet the timelines that the municipal government, MGA, provides us. So it's, it has to be done.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Approved? Carried. Discussion on any of this for the egg service board? Mr. Hogan.
Through, Mr. Reeve, the agricultural service board has started a process in the recent, in our recent history of meeting more regularly, and that's the, that's the dates that are outlined before you here. Prior to that, they met more infrequently, and it was more of a reporting that was taking place to the board than it was the board actually setting direction and decision-making. So in the last couple of years, we've had the meetings more regularly, so to allow the egg service board to set more of the direction, set more of the decision-making. And so that's why we're, we're recommending that, that board meet, meet every other month.
Thank you. One of the things that I think that we can do is, these meeting dates and everything, I think we can set them, but as far, as far as how the committee meets or, or what it's involves, I think that is a discussion that we'll have la, at a later, with the committee itself, whether we need to do that or not. Any more discussion? Lorley.
I'll move that council approve the scheduling of the 2026 Agricultural Service Board meetings on the following dates: January 14th, 2026, March 11th, 2026, May 13th, 2026, July 15th, 2026, September 9th, 2026, and November 18th, 2026.
Discussion? All in favor? Counsel Woodstock.
Yes, just a point of order, and I don't want to be, I don't want to be rude or anything like that, but the chair has to vote, so I'm not exactly sure which way you voted the last time, so.
Do we redo the vote?
No, just a point of order that says that you are required to vote as chair of, as Reeve. Just, I, sorry.
Okay, 2020 board and committee appointments, you want to, is anybody need to take a break or anything like that? Anybody needing a coffee? Anybody need another coffee or anything like that? Anybody need another coffee or anything like that? Okay.
Well, it's up to you if you want to call a recess, because we could, we could do a recess. we could do a recess.
You need a bio break, take one.
That's it. I, I don't have to make a motion.
We can take a short.
I, I'd like to take a short break.
Okay.
Yep.
We're back in session here at nine thirty-seven. Twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Board and Committee Appointments. Agriculture Service Board, Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Reeve McCook. The Agricultural Service Board is a legislated body. Here's a legislated board for rural municipalities. Their purpose is to, is to guide or to recommend to council programs, procedures, or, I'm going to go back to word, programs, for our, pardon me, agricultural and rural producers. That, that committee has a recent, this is the first organizational meeting, after which that committee has been reformatted a bit. So as of this meeting, we're looking to, the structure of the committee is three councillors and four members-at-large. Previously, it was four councillors and three members-at-large. The decision was made to flip that around to have more members-at-large and producers on the, on the recommending body. So the, the members-at-large are appointed for multi-year terms, so there is a bit of overlap between their, their terms. So we have some members on there existing, and the decision in front of council is which three members of council you wish to appoint to the committee, and which member-at-large you wish to, to appoint as well. The reminder at the beginning of the meeting, we talked about voting procedures, so if there are additional individ, if there are more members of council that wish to be on that committee, then you can, will to go through the voting procedures. A lot of these committees, you'll note, in the overall agenda package have their primary, what are referred to as a primary member, so those are the individuals who routinely attend those meetings. And often, these committees also include the appointment of an alternate. And the role of the alternate is basically they're the first phone call. If as a primary member, you can't make that meeting, then ultimately, any member of council could attend in your place, but there's a designated alternate, so that they know that they're the first, they're the first call to go there. So when you see that throughout the agenda, that's what that purpose of the alternate is.
Any discussion? Mr. Whitstock?
I would like to be appointed to the Ag Service Board.
Anyone else?
I guess I would also like to serve on that board.
Okay. Is this motion, these are motions? Just appointments?
All of, all of the appointments will eventually be done by motion, yes.
Need some more? Whoa. Any others? You got enough?
Yep.
Motion?
I'll make the motion that council appoint Councillor Whitstock, Councillor Anderson, and Councillor Olsen to the Agriculture Service Board, and appoint Councillor Penner as an alternate member.
All in favor? Carrie? You announced, yeah. Agricultural Appeal Board? Mr. Hogan?
Through Mr. Chair, just to the, the previous item, they're also recommending that council appoint a chair of the Ag Service Board from among those members.
Oh.
So it's up to, of the members that council appointed as their primary members, we're recommending that council appoint one of them as the chair of the Agricultural Services Board.
Which would be a vote?
Yes, through, appointment through motion.
So we're asking for a discussion or a name?
If somebody puts forward a name, so we would have Councillor Whitstock, Councillor Anderson, and, sorry, who was Councillor Olsen, on the, on the committee. So council's consideration of one of those three that you'd like to act as the chairperson for the Agriculture Service Board. If that's, if you have somebody in mind as a member, you can put a motion forward that council appoint that person as chairperson of the Agricultural Services Board, and then as council, you'd have discussion and voting.
I move that we would nominate Jerry Whitstock for that. For the Agriculture Service Board. Yeah, sorry, chairperson. Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie? Soil Conversa, Soil Conservation Appeal Board? Mr. Hogan?
Through Mr. Reeve, just today, we're on the, is it the Agricultural Appeal Board?
Oh, did we, I already had that checked off. Oh. Okay, Agricultural Appeal Board.
Through Mr. Chair, to council, the purpose of the Agricultural Appeal Board is to hear any appeals under the Agricultural Acts enforced by the county. According to the Weed and Control and Pest Act, the municipality needs to establish at least annually an independent appeal panel to hear and determine appeals under those acts. The, the county doesn't receive a lot of these. I'm not sure that in my time here that we've actually had any. What we did a number of years ago as the county is, rather than have a separate group of individuals who need to be trained on how to conduct an appeal process and all that, the county made the decision to start using the subdivision and development appeal board as the appeal board for this purpose as well. To be a member of the subdivision development appeal board, there is actually legislative training you have to go through to be certified to do that, and given that we're already training people to do that, it was felt that they could serve a dual purpose and perform this as well. So if, if council would like to go that same route, then the recommended motion is that council utilizes the subdivision development appeal board for the agricultural appeal board. If council does not want to go that direction, then we would look to, to advertise for members of that board. Once again, this board doesn't, we need to have it in place, but I don't, it doesn't meet very often. In fact, I can't recall the last time it did.
Any discussion? Jerry?
I'd like to make the motion, the council utilizes the SDAB for the Ag Appeal Board, Subdivision and Development Appeal Board. Shouldn't use acronyms.
Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie? You announced. Soil Conversation, Soil Conservation Appeal Board? Mr. Hogan?
Through Mr. Chair, the, the Agricultural Service Board appoints officers for carrying out legislated, legislated requirements that, that we perform on behalf of the province. The, with that, there's always the opportunity that they will do things that, that there's an appeal for, and that, in that case, then we need a group to hear that appeal. Historically, the county has used the Agriculture Service Board for this mechanism, given that the, the number of large members that are on it, the mixture of having council on it, but as well, they're looking at tasks that are directly related to programs that the, that staff within agricultural services perform.
That appears to be quite a bit of redundancy. I believe the business of agriculture is also a soil conservation. Do we need more people paid positions for that kind of a position?
Through, through the chair, these aren't, members of this committee are not, they're not paid positions? I shouldn't, I'll clarify that. The individuals that are sitting on that do receive per diems, but they're there as part of the Agricultural Service Board anyway. So this would be the same members-at-large and the same three councillors, yourself included, that were just appointed to the ASP.
Mr. Hoppins?
I make a motion that council appoints the Ag Service Board, Agricultural Service Board, as a Soil Conservation Act Appeal Board, per section fourteen A of the Soil Conservation Act.
Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie, you announced. Aqua Seven Regional Water Commission? Mr. Hogan?
Through Mr. Chair, the Aqua Seven Regional Water Commission is, as the name implies, a regional water commission. They are the entity that delivers water to a number of municipalities within the region, including some of Neheal County's water systems. Neheal County itself utilizes several different sources through, for our multiple water systems that we have. Some of them, like in, in a couple of the hamlets, are based on our wells. Some of them are from the town of Three Hills, and some of them come from Aqua Seven. So this, as well, some come from Drumheller. Aqua Seven is a transmission entity that provides water to those systems, and as such, has a board that is made up of representatives from the municipalities which it serves. The Aqua Seven Regional Water Commission is actually managed by Neheal County, utilizing Neheal County staff, and the Water Commission actually pays the county to conduct that management for it. The recommendation here is that we appoint one member of council to the Aqua Seven Regional Water Commission, and one member as an alternate.
Councillor Whitstock?
I would like to sit on Aqua Seven. I've been there for a number of years. I have a lot of history there, and a lot of knowledge of what's going on.
Any discussions on that? I'm not sure if this is the right time, but I mean, I think a lot of these boards, if there's stuff that is fluff and we don't need, I think it should be brought forth too. Jerry, you've been on the Water Commission for a long time, like you said, but, I mean, there, there's always room for where our ratepayers have an investment, or the county has an investment in this stuff, and we need to, wherever we have dollars and cents in there, big time, we better be on there. And we better make sure that we're, we're getting the bang for the buck, rather than whatever. But any, any further discussion? Motion? Do we need an alter, yeah? Do we need an alternate?
Yes, we just need an alternate, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
I would like to be an alternate, then, if that's...
Discussions? Motion?
I'll move that council appoints Councillor Whitstock to the Aqua Seven Regional Water Commission, and Councillor Penner as the alternate.
All in favor? Neheal Regional Emergency Management Advisory Committee? Mr. Hogan?
Through Mr. Chair, to council, the Regional Emergency Management Advisory Committee is a legislated committee, so under the Emergency Management Act, all entities, all municipalities need to have one of these. In Neheal County, we have regionalized this with our, with our five urbans, so that is the, the two towns and three villages. This, we need, we're requested or required to appoint a member to this group. As the name implies, it's an advisory board, so when there are emergencies or events, this board is not the ones necessarily responding. That's the Neheal Regional Emergency Management Agency. The advisory board is the governance body over top of the, the entire system, so they're not the ones actually conducting emergency operations. This group is required legislatively to meet once per year, and generally, that is the, that is the commitment level, so looking at once or twice a year that this board generally meets.
Any discussion? Oh, Councillor Whitstock?
I'd like to make the motion that council appoints the Reeve to the Regional Emergency Management Advisory Committee, and Deputy Reeve as the alternate.
Discussion? All in favor? Pardon me, Carrie, you announced. Central Alberta, Central Rural Municipalities of Alberta, Zone Two Director Committee? Mr. Whitstock? Mr. Hogan?
The, through Mr. Chair, this, the central rural, so the rural municipalities of Alberta is the province-wide lobbying, and they do a lot of other stuff than lobbying, but the province-wide body for rural municipalities. The, as council's aware, you have the RMA Convention that's upcoming. The RMA itself, even though it's province-wide, does also divide itself into five zones. So we, as Neheal County, are part of Zone Two. We have, with that, there are central RMA meetings that occur a couple of times a year. The planning for those meetings is done in advance of that by the, the elected officials who are, who make up the, the group. The, generally, that meeting is attended by Reeves and Deputy Reeves of the various municipalities to determine what topics they'd like on the agenda, and to put that two together, and give staff direction on what, what they're putting together. The CMR, the CRMA Director Meetings are held a couple of times a year, and they're actually held in this office. Neheal County actually hosts those, those meetings because we're central to, to Zone Two, so it's easier for all of the municipalities to come to a central location in that. As part of, because Neheal County hosts that, we generally don't host the full CMR, the Central Region Meetings, where all of the elected officials from Central Alberta or Zone Two attend. So that is, that's how that process has been working historically, so. With that, as I said, most municipalities are appointing the, the Reeve and Deputy Reeve to attend these.
Any discussions? Motion? Mr. Whitstock?
Sorry about this. I would move that council appoint the Reeve to the Central Rural Municipalities of Alberta Director Committee, and appoint Deputy Reeve as alternate. As these meetings are held here, I would encourage the Deputy Reeve to also attend. It is a good, good practice that we've had over the years, and it's working quite well.
Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie, you announced. Community Futures Wild Rose? Mr. Hogan?
Through Mr. Reeve, Community Futures is a nonprofit entity, which the county has historically appointed somebody to. Its purpose is to foster business development within, within the region, and so the, the efforts of the county on that board are to review those, those applications, to, to look at them in conjunction with a number of individuals from business, and use that as a mechanism to, again, foster economic activity, foster new business starts or expansions within, within the region. And that is the, the function that Community Futures has played. The individual that is appointed to this board, there are the standard per diems and things like that that, that occur and go along with any of these appointments. The county itself pays, does not pay money into Community Futures. The, the recommendation is that council appoint an individual to the, to the entity as well as an alternate.
Any discussion? Councillor Lorley?
I would be very interested in serving on this committee. We've had a business, rural business, semi, well, urban with a rural flavor business for thirty-four years, and served as directors of Chamber of Commerce for the area, so pretty passionate about rural business, so I would be happy to serve on this committee.
Any discussion? Motion? Oh, you need an alternate. Where does it say that? Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, okay. An alternate? Okay, Merle's put his name forth. Any discussion? Motion? Mr. Hoppins?
I make a motion that council appoint Councillor Cunningham to the Community Futures Wild Rose Committee, and Councillor Anderson as alternate.
All in favor? Carrie? Neheal Medical Service Retention and Recruit, Recruitment Committee? Mr. Hogan?
Through Mr. Reeve, this, this committee would generally refer, refer to as Dr. R and R. The, this committee technically still exists, although it's been put on pause for the time being. The, as it technically still exists, we are recommending that a member be appointed to it in court, in case it needs to, in case it needs to meet again, although we're not anticipating that it will. Previously, Dr. R and R, their focus was to look at programs, processes, and that operate in the region, to encourage medical practitioners to choose Neheal County to, to conduct their practice in. So staffing the, I shouldn't say staffing the medical clinic, but attracting doctors to work in the medical clinic, as a, as an example, and looking at other, other needs. Previously, the main program of the committee was to, was to basically attract doctors and provide retention and recruitment bonuses to those doctors that came in to, to work at the clinic. In reviewing that program, it was determined that that was prob, that was not necessarily the best way to try and encourage that. At that same time, the, we were looking at several doctors potentially leaving the, leaving the community to do that, and so there was a discussion with the doctors about what that, what that would look like. The importance of having staffed doctors here is that there's a critical mass needed to operate the hospital. And so if you're losing doctors from your community, you start to put the hospital at risk for many services, too. I'm sure every member of council has seen around the province at different times where different emergency rooms are closed, or, and, and the like. The, what came out of that was a rent stabilization program. The medical clinic itself is owned by Neheal County, and previous to about a year, year and a half ago, a couple of years ago, the medical clinic paid a, paid a rent to the county. The rent stabilization program was put in place as a pilot program, in which the rent would be covered for the doctors. The other component of that is, rather than Neheal County footing that bill alone, the other regional municipalities, towns and villages, came on board to contribute to that cost as well. So that's a regional initiative to, to do that, and to stabilize the, the provision of medical services within, in the county. Early result, early feedback from that is that that program has been successful in actually retaining some doctors and helping to recruit new ones to, to this community. So it's one of the things that, in a, in a bit of time here, that council will be reviewing to see if there's merits to continuing that program or not. As of now, there's no, no need for the Dr. R and R to meet, but it technically does still exist, so we're recommending a, a primary and an alternate be appointed to it.
Discussion? One of the things I'd like to comment on is, a lot of the ratepayers throughout, not just my area, everywhere, are wondering why we're subsidizing healthcare. So, I mean, that's just a thought. We need to think about that, and I mean, I think we need to think about taxpayers' dollars on every one of these boards. But being that we're into this, we, we still, I think we still have to have a representative on this, and, and decide whether or not we need this. But that's just, that's just comments I'm, I'm bringing forth. Any other discussion?
I would also, in my visiting in households, being as my area is in the Drumheller area, they voiced concerns of why we're subsidizing doctors here, when most of our medical services provided in different areas. I agree with, let's play a, a level playing field. I just, they're not being represented by the same doctors that everybody else in this area is.
Any other discussion? I think, I think this is something that we can continue on with. One of the, and, and I mean, everything we do should be, how does this affect a ratepayer? Dollars and cents spent. I mean, I can go back, I can go back, and, and what's happened here is with this doctor's office and even this new building, it's very, it's still an issue, the way it was, the way it was handled and the way it was put in. So I think we got some concerns, and we've got some work to carry out here on this stuff, so. Any, any other discussion?
So I, I would, I would sit on this committee, since we need to have people appointed to it at this point.
Mr. Whitstock?
I would like to sit as the alternate on this committee. The reason we have doctors here that staff the hospital is because if we didn't have some sort of way to keep them here, they wouldn't be here. It's very hard to find doctors that will practice in a rural community, and we've been lucky that we've had the opportunity to bring new doctors in, and there's a lot that have stayed, but if they start peeling off, the hospital is at risk of not having enough doctors there, and who knows what the direction of Alberta Health Services will be if there's no doctors willing to practice in this area. That's just a comment, but I just wanted to say I would sit as alternate.
Any more discussion on that? And Lorley?
Yeah, just kind of thinking about the last four years, the discussion that we had over this. We, as Councillor Whitstock mentioned, I mean, keeping this hospital open is very important to our area. We, we want to attract people, we want to keep people here in Neheal County. The jobs that the hospital provides, so we need to have the hospital, that's the bottom line. My other thought process was, whether the decision was right at the time, Neheal County chose to build the medical clinic, so we have it, we own it. If the doctors aren't utilizing it, I really can't think of anybody in the area that's going to rent that space. It's a pretty unique space. So to me, to have the doctors there is kind of integral to our area and to attracting people here. So it's definitely something we can chat about further, and I, sorry, Mr. Hogan, I can't remember how long that agreement's for, but it will be something, it will be coming forward in the future, I believe.
Mr. Hogan?
Through Mr. Chair, that was a, that was a three-year pilot, and so that we're, I'd have to look at the exact date that that pilot is up, but we're, we're well into it now.
Okay. Any discussion on this anymore? A motion? To appoint?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to accept Counselor Penner as a board member for the Nealel Medical Services Retention and Recruitment Committee and also for Jerry Woodstock as alternate.
Any discussion? All in favor? Kerry, you announce. Central Alberta Economic Partnership. Mr. Hogan.
The Central Alberta Economic Partnership, or CAPE as we, as we refer to it, is an economic development alliance that, that exists across, well, I shouldn't say CAPE exists across the province, CAPE is a central zone. These economic alliances do exist across the province by different names, but they roughly perform the same purpose. This is looking at regionalizing or leveraging small resources from municipalities to do larger projects that foster economic development. The Nealel County is currently a member of, of CAPE. There is a per capita fee that, that we pay, and after, I will have that number for council in a minute. It's about forty-two hundred dollars a year that Nealel County contributes on a per capita, sorry, contributes in total to, to be a member of this organization. The organization has been going through some change lately. It is one of the things that administration is looking, is watching or looking at to determine if there is actually going to be future benefit to Nealel County to remain a, a member of CAPE, to make a recommendation on that to council. At this time, we're recommending that council appoint a primary and an alternate to that, to that board to aid in that, that assessment. So right now, we are a member of CAPE. We're looking to, we're suggesting that council appoint one of your member, a member from council to that board and to, from there, make that assessment as to whether Nealel County continues in that, in that entity or not.
Any discussion? Counselor Lowell.
I was wondering if I could get any comment from Counselor Cunningham, seeing she was an alternate member on this, whether this is something that is beneficial to us or not.
So we had that discussion, oh gosh, a couple of months ago, I believe. Yeah, there was quite a robust discussion, and as Mr. Hogan mentioned, there definitely has been some changes with CAPE. So, Mr. Hogan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we are committed for the next year to CAPE. So that is, you know, it's definitely a program that we could, you know, look at and consider if it's viable for us. In terms of my involvement, I actually was never called to serve as an alternate, so I, that's okay. So I can't comment a whole bunch on it, but I definitely know there was a lot of fluctuation, I think some change in the management and stuff, so I, it would definitely be something I would want to look to the future and see if it's, if it's important to Nealel County.
Any other discussion? One of the things I'd say too is if, if we can, if we can get rid of stuff like this, or I shouldn't say like this, but if, I mean, i- i- if it's not beneficial, like we, we don't need, I, I don't believe we need to commit to another year, do we? Mr. Hogan? Are we already in there?
Through, we're, we're already a member of CAPE, we have been for, for many years. The, I don't know when the county first started in its membership with CAPE, but we're, when I say many years, I'm talking very, you know, well over a decade, I would think. The, with that, we could explore having, we'd explore the terms of reference to see what it would take to give notice to, to withdraw from it. Council also has the opportunity that if you decide, if it's determined that the county no longer wants to take part, we would give that notice accordingly.
Thank you. Discussion or not? I, I.
I guess we're already paying for, for this year, maybe we should have a representative there for this year, but definitely something we need to discuss.
I agree. The, the, or, one of the things, one of the things I was thinking on this too is, I mean, if, if, we can always get out of that. We just have to give notice, but I mean, we should probably do, like you said, but we don't have to go the full year if we don't need to. Like, we need to find out what's going on, and then if it's not beneficial, we're out. Any, any discussion, any more discussion on that? Motion? Sorry, who is the council member? Oh, okay, well then I'll, I'll let my names.
We have our motion on the table? Okay, I, I'm looking to put a motion on the table. I would move the council appoint Counselor Olson to the Central Alberta Economic Partnership Committee and Counselor Hoppins as the alternate.
The Police Advisory Committee is related to Three Hills Detachment, is established for the purpose of formalizing the process for receiving input from the community and the partnership between the community, the RCMP, and local governments. So the Police Advisory Committee meets regularly, they meet with the detachment members, members, as well as Counselor Cunningham, I believe it's usually Sergeant Day that attends those from the, okay, with, with his, yeah, with his filling other duties. The, so this is one of the, the mechanisms to, to provide community input to the, to the functions of the RCMP. Around that, the, we'll note that a number of years ago, there was no requirement, no, rural municipalities were not charged for RCMP services. The province changed that, and so over the course of several years, rates were gradually introduced and increased to rural municipalities. So since, I think about twenty-twenty, twenty-nineteen, around there, the, the county went from paying nothing for RCMP services to almost a half million dollars a year is our current bill. The recommendation on this item is that we appoint a primary and an alternate to the Police Advisory Committee.
Any discussion on that? Need an alternate? Merle? Any discussions? Laurelly?
Just sitting on that, I think I sat on it for three years, so just want to say what a great committee this is, very collaborative committee, and as Mr. Hogan said, Sergeant Day, gosh, for two and a half years probably was on this committee, and then he's, he's had a new posting, so, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm not sure if it's Corporal Nyman, but Constable Nyman. Constable, thank you. He's taken over the last little while, so, yeah, I just want to say it's just a great group to be a part of, and it really keeps us up to date on what's going on with the RCMP in our local community, and then it gives us the opportunity to provide feedback too for what we're hearing in our area too, so really great committee.
Thank you. Any discussion? Motion? Laurelly?
I'll move that council appoint Counselor Hoppins to the Police Advisory Committee and Counselor Anderson as alternate.
All in favor? Kerry, you announce. Drumheller Solid Waste Management. Mr. Hogan.
Through the Chair, the Drumheller Regional Solid Waste, Drumheller and District Regional Solid Waste Management Agency Association oversees waste management within the county, so really they operate the regional landfill. The majority of the county's solid waste, so the garbage, that goes to your transfer stations and, and that makes its way to the landfill in the town of Drumheller. The Solid Waste Management Agency is the operator of that, of that regional landfill and looks after the contracts for the trucking to get the waste from the transfer stations to there. The county's membership fee in Drumheller and District Solid Waste per year is just over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year. With that, we're recommending that council appoint a primary and an alternate to be our representatives on the Drumheller and District Solid Waste Management Association.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Mr. Woodstock?
I would volunteer to sit on this committee if that is the council's wishes.
Okay. An alternate?
I'd let my name stand as an alternate on that.
Thank you. Any discussions? All in favor? Oh, it, pardon me.
I make a motion that council appoint Counselor Woodstock to the Drumheller and District Solid Waste Management Association and Counselor Penner as all, an alternate.
Any discussion? All in favor? Kerry. Nealel Housing Corporation. Mr. Hogan.
Through Mr. Reeve, the Nealel Housing Corporation is, was founded in nineteen-sixty. It operates Golden Hills Lodge and a number of other seniors housing entities throughout the, throughout the region. If, for the Housing Corporation, if you see your tax bill and you see an item on there that is a seniors requisition, that is the funding that goes to this body. So it is not funding that Nealel County itself as an entity contributes, but it is a tax requisition that we are required to levy that goes to fund, fund this organization. The, in addition to that, they receive provincial funding for a portion of their, of their operations as well. Historically, county has appointed two members to this board, and we're recommending that we appoint two members and an alternate.
Any discussion? I have a concern. Like, this stuff is, the Nealel Housing Corporation, along with what's happening here, i- it's, it takes a lot of money, and I, I mean, anytime these guys build something around here, it ends up being back on our tax dollar, it seems. So this one to me is, is real important, that we look at this, and we, we, we have to have representatives on this, that, because this is big, this is big bucks, and this, this affects us. We seem to be spending the most amount of money of everybody within the Nealel County, the towns and villages is included, and our population isn't, isn't there yet. But I mean, that, that's why I say this is, this is something that we, we've got, this is an important one, it's always been an important one. And I mean, we've got another, another structure heading up in Troschu that could turn around sideways too, but we'll discuss that one later, but any, can, any, any more discussion on this? Mr. Hogan?
Just as a note to, to this, the, the requisition that is paid on this is a number that we are given by Nealel Housing. We don't have a say in that requisition, it's just we're the levying entity for it. So what they, what they tell us that they, they need is what we requisition the, the taxpayers for and pass it along to them. That proportion of funding is determined by equalized assessment, which is a term we'll be, you'll be getting familiar with in the, in the course of your time on council. But so the, the funding breakdown for this entity is actually determined by assessment values of the, of the member municipalities. That again is, is legislated.
Any more discussion? Counselor Cunningham?
So I've sat on this committee for four years, so if any of my fellow council members want to hop on this one, I'd be happy to let this one go and probably wouldn't hurt to have maybe some change and new voices at the table, so.
All sit, I would be interested in sitting on this board.
Okay, any discussion? We need an alternate? Or two, two more?
One more and an alternate.
Okay. Okay. And now we need an alternate? Any discussions? All in favor? Oh, pardon me, pardon me. Yeah? Motion? Count, uh, Counselor Hoppins?
I make a motion that counselor appoint, that council appoint Counselor Penner and Counselor Anderson to the Nealel Housing Corporation and Counselor Olson as alternate.
Any discussion? All in favor? Kerry, you announce. Nealel Housing? No, Nealel Regional Family and Community Services, or Community Support Services? Mr. Hogan?
Through Mr. Reeve, the, the Nealel Regional Family and Community Support Services, or what we refer to as FCSS, is a partnership that, not only between the province and municipalities, but in this region is a partnership between the local municipalities as well. For this and for other items, even earlier today that you've heard, talking about our local municipalities, I'm using that as a broad, broad catch-all for Nealel County, the towns of Troschu and Three Hills, as well as the villages of Carbon Acme and Linden. So if you do hear me say that, that's the, the group that I'm referring to. The, each of those entities puts, puts representatives on that board. That board does look after a number of social programs that go on in the, in the area. They also look after the, some of the community wellness workers that operate out of our, out of our schools and help with the needs of families and youth through that, through that mechanism. The funding for this is eighty percent provincial, twenty percent municipal, so the overall funding that's used by FCSS, eighty percent of that comes from the province. In order to get that eighty percent, the municipalities are required to put in the other twenty percent. So if the municipalities don't fund this, you don't get the eighty percent from the province. The, with that, what we're looking at or recommending is appointing a member from council to the Nealel Regional Family and Community Services Board and a member as an alternate.
Discussion?
Could you offer a breakdown on, on how it's, how the, how the mun, the municipal numbers break out, or do the villages and towns supply, what their breakdown would be for, for each municipality then? Or maybe just a generalized look at that? Sorry. Is it making sense?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Through the Chair to Counselor Olson, we can provide that, I don't have that at the tip of my fingers, but we do get that information every year when they submit their, when they submit their budget to us. So the representative on this committee actually helps set the FCSS budget at their board meetings, and then that budget is forwarded to the councils for their review. And if a number of, basically if a majority of councils in the area approve that budget, then that becomes the FCSS budget. The, there is a breakdown that's attached to that, and we can get that to you.
That information, I guess, is the answer that I need, I don't need you to supply more information at this point.
Okay, well, further, but further discussion on that?
Oh.
You, you were talking about how that twenty percent is broke down.
Yes.
Right, and I agree with that. Like, I mean, it's a good question. The, the twenty percent probably isn't split evenly, right? I'm guessing that they, that the county's paying big time on this. So, I mean, we need to know, and that's why that person sitting on that board, right? That's why whoever's sitting on these boards, they need to learn that information and bring it back to us. That's, and, and that's why it's important. I mean, this FCSS is, or this has been a discussion point for thirty years, and it was, it was thrown at the counties. They were told they had to do it, right? We didn't have a choice in it from the provincial government, so we need to sit on there and make sure that your, your questions and concerns are, are good, because we don't need to subsidize towns and villages either, right? Any further discussion? We need, oh, Laurelly? Or Counselor, Counselor Cunningham?
Call me whatever you want.
Don't, don't call you late.
Yeah, that's right. I'd be happy to. I'd be happy to be the champion on this committee. I always say in my past life I was a social worker, so pretty passionate about families and individuals and the health of those. And I also want to say one thing that I think gets overlooked a little bit with FCSSS is also the funding to seniors outreach as well. So the seniors sometimes get a little missed in that, but they do provide funding for senior programming as well, which is very important, especially with our aging population. So I would be happy to sit on this if so chose.
Okay. Further discussion? We got a thing in front of us, the breakdown? Mr. Hogan, you want to go through that?
Through the chair, the, the breakdown of the requisition is just as it's laid out in, in front of you. So you can see the percentage that each municipality puts in. So the county's percentage is just under forty-six. The next highest would be the town of Three Hills. If you go to the far column on the right, you'll see the, what that translates to in the actual cash contribution. So Neale County's, as we said, is just over eighty thousand dollars. The, the province, sorry, I'll back up. The municipalities, they're, they contribute a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-one. The province also contributes three-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-eight.
Any discussion on this? This is one of the reasons, like I say, when the county's starting to pay, that pays the majority, right? You got to be careful on this kind of stuff. Mr. Deputy, Mr. Deputy.
I would sit on as an alternate for this committee.
What did we need? Did we needed a? Any discussion? Motion?
I would move that council appoint Councilor Cunningham to the Neale Regional Family and Community Support Services Board, and Councilor Hopkins as the alternate.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Through Mr. Chair, the Neale Regional Partnership is an entity that exists for all of, again, that, that, those regional municipalities, that local group, to meet a few times a year to look at different programs in the region. Their primary focuses are looking at providing training, largely geared towards elected officials, as well as looking at opportunities for joint service delivery. So looking at ways that the local municipal group can do projects or deliver services at lower cost if they're doing it together, rather than at a higher cost doing it separately. So some of those are main functions, some of those are, are more one-offs. So whether that's a type of marketing campaign as a one-off, or whether that's a, an exploration of a broader service. So something like regional fire, which is a topic that is being applied for, for grant funding to explore currently.
Discussion? Let's address a little bit of this. This one's, this one's very important. I mean, a lot of, a lot of the taxpayers, not just from my area, from all over, they don't like this idea of our tax dollars, Neale County tax dollars, being spent with towns and villages. As long as these, this is a fair shake and a fair kick at the cat, and tax dollars aren't being spent to support towns and villages' programs, it's, it seems like a good idea. Over the past years, I don't know how this has worked, but it seems to be working the other day. I mean, we sat there in this, whatever the orientation, but I mean, over the years, this regionalization, what they're trying to get into and stuff like that, ends up hurting us. So that there is something that needs to be watched and looked at. This is another one of those that I don't, it's one of those things that you got to, I get a bad feeling on. And, but if we got the right people sitting on the board and we can manage it, I think that's what we do. But it's like every, every other thing, it sounds like a broken record. I mean, this, these are taxpayers' dollars, so we want to make sure that we're getting a bang for our buck, or we don't need to be there. More discussion? Mr. Hopkins, or Deputy Hopkins?
I was just going to volunteer to sit on this committee.
Excellent. Where are we at? Do we need an alternate?
Yes.
Mr. Woodstock?
I'm not volunteering for the alternate position, but what I am going to state is, Neale Regional is a partnership between all the municipalities that are within our boundaries. This is not a funding board of any sort. What it is, is trying to promote partnerships, and when we have the ability to apply for grants, it makes it more affordable if we can get partners in, if we're headed for the same cause. I think what you are looking at would be the ICFs, and the ICFs is a completely different program, and that one is mandated by the government. So all I'm saying is this one here is, it is to keep us as a municipality with our municipal partners on the same wavelength. One for all, all for one. It's not a funding position.
Thank you. Further to that discussion, I understand that part. That the problem that we have, and I saw it the other day, when they start talking regionalization, we have a concern with that in some areas. That's all he's bringing forth. Do we have a, do we have an alternate?
I can do alternate.
Yeah. Any discussion? Motion?
Yeah, I make the motion that the council appoint Councilor Hopkins to the Neale Regional Partnership Committee and Councilor Cunningham as an alternate.
All in, any discussion? All in favor? Marygold Library System, Mr. Hogan?
Through Mr. Eve, the Marygold Library System is a regional library system, and in this term, case when I say regional, I'm not talking just about the local municipal group. I'm talking about a larger swath of central Alberta that's participating in this. So local libraries that, that exist in municipalities have these regional library boards standing behind them that look at providing services and support for those libraries, they provide funding to those libraries, as well as overseeing the program for what we call inter, interlibrary transfers. So when you go to one library and you order a book that they don't have and it comes from a different library, that's coming through, through this entity. The, the county contributes about just over fifty-two thousand dollars a year to, to Marygold Library Systems to facilitate that service for, for our taxpayers. We're recommending that as members of that, we appoint a primary and an alternate to the Marygold Library Board. As stated in the RFD, they meet about four times a year.
Yeah, again, it'd be nice to have a breakdown of what we pay and what the rest of the municipalities pay for this service.
Okay. Mr. Hogan?
Through Mr. Chair, that's information we can pull. We don't have it at our fingertips, but we can get it.
Okay. This one, this one over the years, it's, this one's always been one of those ifs, ands, or buts, but I mean, I think, like, we still need to be sitting on, we still need to be sitting on this committee. Like, we need to be sitting on them all and figure out what, what we need to have and what we don't need. So we need to point some people here. Oh, Jerry?
If I'm not mistaken, it's a per cap payment on Marygold Library Systems. So the larger the municipality, or the more population in the municipality, it's, it's a dollar per, per head, so, and that's where we're at, is roughly, what did you say? Fifty thousand?
Through the, through the chair, just over fifty-two thousand.
So we still got some dollars invested, so we need to, we need to look at this and, and sit on them. Any more discussion? We need some? Nobody? How about we take a recess? Everybody okay with that?
Sure.
Take a recess at ten-thirty-four. We'll, we'll be back in ten minutes.
Okay, we'll come back into session here at 10:49. We need to appoint, we need to appoint the Marigold Library person and an alternative. Volunteers? Okay, discussion. Alternative. I'll put my name forward as an alternative.
Thanks.
Yeah. Okay. That there, can we go back? Was that information for discussion on that alternative census?
Yeah, thanks.
Mr. Hogan, you want to go through that?
So, Chair, as that's just coming up on the screen in a larger format. So, these numbers are the ones that the county has historically paid to Marigold Library to be a member. You'll see the population numbers fluctuate in there. One note that I'll make about population. A few years back, the province changed the way that municipal populations are, for lack of a better word, I'm going to say "done." They take the census and now instead of going back out, they provide an estimate. So, for the last few years, the county's population has been bouncing around a bit because it's based on an estimate that the province does. And so, that, as you see that, you know, jumping up and then back down. Again, that's the provincial number. The current one is 4914, but that's being done on an estimation system that the province does. And you'll likely see that fluctuate. I mean, it's been stagnant for a little bit here, but you'll likely see that fluctuate over time as well.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
So, prior to 2021, we did not pay anything into this?
Through the Chair, we were a member of Marigold Library prior to, in 2021, I'd have to go back and look at the history of that. I don't, it might just be that we don't have the number in there, but we've been a member since before 2021.
Mr. Woodstock.
Yeah, we've been members back, boy, trying to think, probably 20, 2000? It's been, we've been on that board long time.
And 17 years before that. Any more discussion? You have a motion? Mr. Hopkins?
I appoint, or I make a motion that council appoints Counselor Anderson and as the, to the Marigold Library system, and Counselor Olson as alternate. Oh, no, that was wrong, sorry.
That was a good try, though.
Nope.
All in favor?
Nope.
Oh, and any discussion?
And clarify. Reeve McCook as alternate.
Any discussion?
Through, Mr. Reeve, to council, the Municipal Planning Commission, or MPC, as you'll hear it more commonly referred to, is a development authority that looks after a number of items related to planning and development, the primary one being discretionary uses under the land use bylaw. The bylaw that establishes the Municipal Planning Commission, bylaw 1784, does indicate that all members of council are members of the Municipal Planning Commission. So, we'd be looking for a, looking for council to appoint a chairperson and a vice chairperson from among you, as well as the MPC can appoint up to two members-at-large under that bylaw as well. You'll see in the package, we've had four applications for members-at-large to sit on the Municipal Planning Commission. So, it'll be a decision of councils to which of those two, or one, or none that you appoint to serve on that board with you. One of the notes around Municipal Planning Commission, and this will come as well later in the orientation process, even though all members of council are members of the MPC, your function at MPC is different than that of a counselor. At the Municipal Planning Commission, you're actually a commission member tasked with applying the land use bylaw and other planning documents. You're actually not a counselor necessarily at that meeting. So, you'll learn more about that in the upcoming process, and we get into more specifics around planning. But for now, looking for council to appoint a chair, a vice chair, and determine which, if any, members-at-large you wish to put on the commission.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Woodstock?
I would volunteer to sit as chairman of MPC if that is the wishes of council.
Any discussion? Are we doing it one by, excuse me, are we doing it one by one?
As the Chair, ideally, one by one would be good.
Motion?
I'll move the council appoint Counselor Woodstock as chairperson to the Municipal Planning Commission.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any discussion on the vice chair? Well, you're looking at me.
Yeah, I'd let my name stand for vice chair.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, pardon me, need a motion. As vice chair? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Gary Ginnas? All right, this will be, we'll let, pass this back to Mr. Hogan, and he can discuss the process on this for us, on the members-at-large.
Through Reeve, to council, as you see in the package, you've got four members there. You can appoint zero, one, two, or up to two to the MPC. The current composition of the MPC does include two, or I shouldn't say "does" because we're sorting that out today, it has historically included two members-at-large when we've had the people come forward. You have applications from four residents, Amy Merrill, Bern Lanley, Rick Vickery, and Gary Rimple, to decide on. As council, it's up to you, as you go through this, as to how you want to decide who you're looking at, if they're individuals you want to put forward. You can do that through motion that the group then decides on. You can also do that through ballots and see if you have a, if you have somebody that rises above the others in that fashion, too. So, really, it's up to councils to how you want to proceed.
Thank you. Discussion on that, how do you guys want to go ahead with this? Like, if you're not comfortable talking openly about it, we can do it by ballot? Do we need a motion on that? Or is this a discussion?
Yeah, through the Chair. The motion will come when you actually appoint the individuals. What I'd suggest is if prior to, if you want, if council's comfortable and wants to use the ballot process, we'll get that ready. If there's, what you probably want to do prior to that, or what we're recommending you do, is you probably want to have some discussion around the applicants, what you feel you're looking for on MPC, those sorts of items. If you, you know, to whatever extent as council you feel you need that. The members-at-large on MPC do bring a perspective to the committee, but their function on the committee as a board, or on the commission, sorry, as a board member is the same as yours. So, they're there as a board member to interpret documents like the land use bylaw and apply them to the applications that are in front of them, to help determine if there's conditions placed on the permit, assuming it's approved, or the MPC is, and can deny those applications as well. But ultimately, the function of the member of the large is the same as your function as a commission member.
Thank you. Discussion, you want to, which way you want, guys want to go here? Counselor Cunningham?
I don't really know what direction I want to go, but I just want to say thank you to the four people that put their names forward. A lot of times, we don't have enough people that do come forward as members-at-large. We have Ms. Vander Cool that's very active at any rate pair meetings, and she's a champion for recruitment, so good on her for doing that. But yeah, so, I mean, it is a hard decision because we don't often get more than we need. Sometimes, there is an ability to have them, the ones that aren't chosen, to sit on another committee. But again, I just want to put it out there, I just want to say thank you to the four people that did put their names forward. Appreciate that.
Okay, thanks. Any discussion on this, or do you just want to vote, want to do the ballot and then we make a motion? Mr. Woodstock?
I guess my question is, is how many people are we looking to appoint here? Are we looking at one, are we looking at two? We should determine that first.
Mr. Hogan? I gather we're looking at two. Oh, we can decide, pardon me.
Yes, we can make a decision on how many.
Yep. Discussion on that?
I would recommend two. That's my thoughts.
I'm with you because I know that this board's about, it can get heavy.
Is there a mandate that we're only allowed two in our bylaw right now?
Mr. Hogan?
Through the Reeve, to Deputy Reeve Hopkins, there in the bylaw right now, it does state up to two. I think one of the discussions that in our normal course of bylaw review that administration is going to be putting in front of council is actually a question as to whether you want to keep the current composition or not. So, that discussion is coming. But as of right now, the bylaw says up to two.
Everybody okay with two, on discussion-wise? Yeah?
I would be all right with two.
Okay. I don't believe we need to make a motion. It's already there, not unless you're going to change it. I think we just put the, we put the names on the ballots, and then a motion is made. Mr. Hogan?
Through Reeve McCook, that's, I think that's correct, is if council's good with appointing two, then what we'd look for is for you to write two names on the back of that ballot, and then we'll tally them up and see what, once we see what the result is, then you can go from there, as if we just need to do another round of balloting if there's a tie or something, or if you're prepared to make a motion appointing those two individuals.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hogan?
Through Mr. Reeve, the results of the council poll were in favor of Gary Rimple and Bern Lamley. So those two received, those were your top two, top two vote-getters in that ballot.
I'll move the council point Bern Lamley and Gary Rimple as members at large to municipal planning commission. And again, just thank you to everybody who put their name forward, really appreciate that.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Red Deer River Municipal User Group. Mr. Hogan?
Through Mr. Reeve to council, the Red Deer River Municipal Users Group, or RDR Mug, as you'll sometimes hear us refer to it as, is an association of municipalities, both rural and urban, that deal with issues, or look at issues regarding the Red Deer River, which is, of course, the main water source for much of the, much oral of the area. The, this group is generally held every other month in Drumheller. We are recommending, as per the RFD, that council appoint a primary and an alternate to the Red Deer River Municipal Users Group, and for council's information, the county's membership fee, or the county's cost of being involved in this, not including per DMs and things like that, is about thirteen hundred a year.
Mr. Woodstock?
I would volunteer to sit on this committee if council chooses. I think it works out to twenty-five cents, requisition of twenty-five cents per cap.
Is, just for discussion, is this, is this the one that we, there's another one, too, isn't there?
No, we're no longer part of Red Deer River.
We got, we got out of that Red Deer, okay.
That was quite a while ago.
Yeah, okay.
This one actually is strictly for municipal users that use, source the Red Deer River as their body of water for treatment plants and consumption.
Do you recommend where the use is allowed, or?
Being areas out of provincial.
That's a provincial. Province decides, like, right now, I think we're at sixty-eight percent allocated, but they use the allocation to fulfill the South Saskatchewan River Basin, because the Bow and the Old Man are at capacity, at a hundred percent capacity, so.
And we're not.
Well, no, we're not, but.
Discussion, Lowell?
So are we looking for two council members?
Yes, yeah, we're looking for.
And an alternate, or just a council member and an alternate? Because it shows two council members last time.
I'm not sure.
No, we're looking for, we're looking for a councillor and an alternate, right? Or?
That's the way it has been. I'm not sure why it showed up the way it is here.
So we need an alternate?
I would like to come and ask that.
Okay, any discussion?
I would move that council appoint councillor Woodstock to the Red Deer River Municipal Users Group, and councillor Anderson as the alternate.
Any discussion? All in favor? Subdivision and Development Appeal Board, Mr. Hogan?
Through Mr. Reeve to council, the subdivision development appeal board is the, as its name implies, is the appeal board for planning processes. So when the county issues a permit, or the MPC issues a permit, there's opportunities for impacted individuals to submit an appeal. There's actually also opportunities for the person who has issued the permit, or denied it, to appeal as well, if there are appealing conditions and things like that. So you need a quasi-judicial board to hear that appeal. There is training that those individuals have to go through, so a number of them that are on the board currently have already had that training. We are looking to, recommending that another person be placed on that board. One of the things about SDAB is that if you are a member of the municipal planning commission, you cannot be a member of the subdivision and development appeal board.
One of the things that I was just noticing here is, a lot of these got, not a lot of them, but there's people on here that don't even need county rate pairs. Connie Fraser isn't a county rate pair, she lives in Chosu. I think we need to have county rate pairs involved in this. Any, or is that a stip, I guess that's the other thing. Mr. Hogan?
Through the chair, there's no stipulation on residency to be a member of this, of a subdivision development appeal board.
So we're making decisions on stuff that's happening in Neale County from a person that lives in Chosu, or Three Hills? And that's okay? Discussion, Lowell?
I guess it depends on how neighbors can vote for the county, but they have land in the area where they live in there. They have land, and they do have interest in the county, and they do pay the taxes to the county, but if they can't vote, maybe.
Yeah, this is, and this is some of the discussion, if you guys are okay with that, I mean, Connie Fraser does own land, but she lives in the town of Chosu. And I mean, if you're going to vote for a councillor. Everybody's okay? Any discussion on that? Counselor Lowell?
So we're looking for two people that are not on the municipal planning commission, so members at large, and two of the ones we just voted for to be on that municipal planning commission cannot be on this one as well, is that correct?
Or, Mr. Hogan?
Through the chair, that's correct. So an individual cannot be on municipal planning commission and the subdivision development appeal board. If I can anticipate where you're going, councillor Olson, is whether or not we'd want to approach the two that weren't selected for MPC and gauge their interest in being members of SDAB. That can be done, and if they're interested, we can bring an item back to a future council meeting to appoint them, if that's council's wish. In the past, it has been a struggle to get members for SDAB, and you do need a, you do need a set number for quorum. There are legislated guidelines, not guidelines, there are legislated timelines upon which an appeal has to be heard once it's submitted, those sorts of items that occur. So the, having additional members on that, because everybody has scheduling and jobs and everything that they need to, need to work around. So there is, having more than the base number of people on that board has been beneficial, because we never know when these things are going to come up. We essentially went several years without one, and we've had two in the last two months. So there are, they happen as needed.
Oh, Mr. Woodstock?
And I guess supplemental to Mr. Hogan's, training is required. The province insists on training for these SDAB members, and general, we don't generally have more than three that come forward for a subdivision appeal, or subdivision and development appeal. So it's not like they're all going to be here, but we do need a quorum of a minimum of three. And like Mr. Hogan has stated, we haven't had any for a number of years, but yes, we've had a couple here in the last couple of months. So I just wanted to put that information out, that if we do want to appoint other members to this board, we would have to see if they are willing to take the training, and whether they'd be available is whoever gets called, gets called. And once that three members is there, I think that's three members that you usually call. And once that's filled, that is the SDAB, so. It is nice to have a selection, by all means.
Yeah. Okay, some more discussion? I'm kind of leaning towards councillor Olson's thoughts about approaching the other two, and I think we should, out of courtesy, see if they're interested. Any discussion?
So I think I agree with that, but further to that, we could still accept the applications of these, like, we could have more than four people to choose from, if those other two individuals were willing to let their name stand and go through the training. I think we could still accept these, our five choices, five choices as candidates at this point, right?
Correct.
As well as, as well as approaching the other two members, our choices, all right.
Mr. Hogan?
Through Mr. Reeve to council, just for council's information on this topic, the bylaw establishing the subdivision development appeal board does outline that you can appoint up to eight members at large, eight members to this.
Discussion?
I just want to recognize Mr. Dennis Day. He's retiring from his position on this board, and he has been with us since 2015, so that's a good ten years that he's put in on this board. So I just want to recognize Mr. Day and thank him for his contributions to this board over the past ten years.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I moved to appoint the five members at large that are on the list, Connie Fraser, Lori Campion, Robert Park, Jenny Scott, Lori McLean, and to add the two members that let their name stand, that we did not, if they so choose, which is Rick Vickery and Amy, Amy Merrill, as, if they want to go through the training and let their name stand for this board as well.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Carry unanimously. Chosu Housing Corporation, Mr. Hogan?
Through Mr. Reeve, I'm just letting our admin staff catch up to getting the previous motion entered into the record. We've captured that correctly?
Yes, that looks correct.
Thank you. Chosu Housing Corporation, so as probably most of council is aware, the town of Chosu has a municipally-controlled corporation, the Chosu Housing Corporation, and they're currently in the process of constructing a senior's assisted living facility on the north side of the town. If you've been up that way, you've probably can't miss the dirt that's been moved and the construction going on. As part of that process and getting that going, the town of Chosu did a lot of work in terms of laying the groundwork for that facility to move forward, applying for grant funding and that. They did run into, they did run into an issue in that in terms of putting that project forward, they themselves did not have the debt capacity to take on that project without ministerial approval. So all municipalities in the province have a legislated debt limit. That limit can only be exceeded with the approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs. The town of Chosu approached the county to see if the county would act as a guarantor for the loan during the construction phase of the project. What, in large part, what that was aimed at is at the grant funding that comes in for the, once you start construction of the project, there's obviously contractors and entities like that that need to be paid as the work is being done, in wanting to make sure that the grant funding, they weren't caught in a position where the grant funding hadn't been received yet, but invoices were due, because that's, the grant funding doesn't always come right at the, after, most of the time, it doesn't come right at the beginning. So they wanted to be able to not have that tie up the process. They approached Neale County and asked if we would act as a guarantor for that loan to cover off the construction period. The county, at the county council the day debated that, and ultimately opted to back that loan, or to act as that guarantor. That doesn't mean that any money from the county would need to be put out, unless something, unless they hit that snag with the grant funding or sideways. The county did put conditions on that guarantee, so as an example, so many of the life lease units, I think it was ninety percent, had to be presold prior to construction. The town had to secure, I believe it was nineteen or twenty million dollars in grant funding before the county would look to guarantee that loan to cover the construction period. The other condition, one of the other ones that was placed on, is that during the time that that guarantee was in place, the county would be, would have an appointee on the Chosu Housing Board. And so that is, that's the topic that's in front of council today. This is a, this is an initiative of the Chosu Housing Corporation. This is not tied to the Neale housing that council looked at earlier in the meeting at all. This is, again, for the construction period. The phase that the group is in right now is looking really at raising the funding necessary for capital equipment, what we'd call FFNE, so furniture, and then your capital, we'd still call it furniture appliances, but essentially those types of, those types of large items. So they, what they're looking for is somebody to represent the county on that board, but to act as a community booster, to go out there and engage the community and look at, look to help access and put together and gain the funding commitment to furnish the complex once it's built.
Mr. Hoppins?
I would put my name volunteer for this committee.
Any discussion on that? One of the things, I got a little thing there on, one of the things that I've heard, and I've been approached by a few rate pairs, is that there's no, doesn't seem to be any such thing as fundraising. They walk in here, and you cut them a check for three hundred thousand for furniture. That's not fundraising. We need to have our guys there to make sure that this isn't happening, so we're not going to get stuck with all this dollars and cents, especially when not everyone's in favor of that outfit, or that building. The other question I have is, there is another, a development going on at the same time as that, the building of that senior housing. Is that part of the, is that, did we cover off part of that in our funding, or our backing? Mr. Hogan?
Through Mr. Reeve, what, I'm not sure what development you're referring to, in terms of the one that's happening simultaneously.
Right beside, right beside it, there's another project going on, it's another subdivision or whatever from the town of Chosu. It's, looks like it's all in one.
If there is, through the chair, if there's a separate subdivision that the town is doing, the county isn't a part of that.
Okay. Okay. Discussion, or Lowell?
Yeah. So did you say that the serving counselor member would be part of a fundraising campaign? Is that correct?
Mr. Hogan?
Through the chair, the, the current place that the board is at and looking to, to gather up the, the funding for the furniture and, and capital equipment, dishwashers, washers, dryers, et cetera. The, they're looking to raise, I believe it's about 2 million dollars. And so what they're looking for is, part of the role of this committee is trying to put that fundraising, I don't know if they're necessarily going to be the ones knocking on doors, but putting that fundraising process or putting that inertia behind the fundraising effort. So being a booster to that, to that cause.
Thank you. Counselor Olson?
Yeah, I'd be in disagreement with our council member having to fundraise or be part of that. That's kind of, fundraising is kind of a specialized area for most things. And I think maybe that's not something we want to be involved in. As far as being on this board, yes, we've backed this loan, and we need to have somebody there. But as far as us being involved with, you know, fundraising in this, that's just my opinion.
Thanks. Counselor Hoppins?
It was my understanding that with the Chosu Housing Corporation, that it's not so much fundraising, or this position isn't fundraising, it's to keep an eye on the progression of the project, excuse me, make sure that everything's, you know, on time and dealt with properly. I don't believe that it was, this role was for fundraising. And I, governance thing, yeah. And I do know they are fundraising. I don't know what their total is so far, but they have done several community events, brought in, I know they're bringing in a speaker here in November to try and raise funds, silent auction items, that kind of stuff, but.
Discussion? I think that, oh, Mr. Holden, no. Discussion on this, I think Counselor Hoppins is, is right. But I think we need to clarify also, in, in that motion, that we're not there to fundraise, like, we're there for the business part. Mr. Hogan?
Just to, to provide some clarity through that, Mr. Reeve, as I said in there, I don't believe that the, and I think this supports what Deputy Hoppins was saying, the function isn't out there to necessarily be the door knockers doing this, but there might be a fundraising component that has a governance board, is there trying to make sure it's moving along. The core business of it is looking after the, the construction and the startup of that facility, though.
More discussion? Anybody, are you guys still interested in putting that motion forth with the, with the clarity? Any discussion? Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, and just to confirm as well what Deputy Reeve Hoppins said, I know when they came to present a couple of months ago, I believe it was, time flies, they have a fundraising coordinator, Carolyn Kung, which many people are familiar with, who was former victim services. So, so they do have staff that is doing the fundraising. So, yeah, that would be my understanding as well, just from former Reeve King and, and Counselor Christie that served is definitely a governance role. I mean, I'm sure if people put their hand up to volunteer, they would certainly welcome that. But yeah, certainly more of a governance, because they, they do have someone in charge of fundraising, for sure.
I'm okay with that explanation. Thank you.
Any discussion? Yeah, we need an alternate. No, I, you don't want me there. Yeah, honest.
I can serve as alternate.
Okay, thanks. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, pardon me, motion?
Somebody needs to make a motion.
Yeah.
Someone needs to be somebody that's not, yeah.
Mr. Peter?
I would like to move that council appoint Counselor Hoppins to the Chosu Housing Corporation Committee and Counselor Cunningham as, as the alternate.
Any discussion? All in favor? Kerry Yanis? Mr. Hogan?
Through Mr. Reeve to, to counsel, so this one item actually covers off a number of different committees, but they all serve the same purpose, just with different, different entities. So the intermunicipal collaboration frameworks, this is an item that was mandated by the province a few years ago, back in 2019, 2020. The municipalities were by law required to have discussions around services that benefit residents from both municipalities. And to, there was a list of core services that we had to talk about, things like recreation, emergency management, water, wastewater, transportation, solid waste, that we had to have discussions about. And through that, determine common ways of providing those services. So that really translates to who's funding, who's funding what. As part of that, that was also added to the municipal government act as a purpose of a municipality was to, to explore those things and jointly fund them. When they first came in, we were required to have an I C F with every one, every municipality that we were a neighboring jurisdiction of. So for us, that is the, that is the, the two towns, the, actually, the three towns, because we border town of Drumheller, the three villages and the rural municipalities that, that surround us. We were partway through that process of getting those, I think that there were 13 or 14, that amounts to, that we had to do. We were partway through that process, and they did change some of the requirements of the I C F, which is that, actually, I'm going to hit myself, that's the I D P. We, they did change that and give an extension to get the I C Fs finished. By that time, we were largely complete in, in terms of getting those in place. So these committees don't, they don't meet that often, but they do meet usually once per council term. And I say once, meaning the process. It might not be one meeting, but there's a process there that, that occurs. And we have to talk about a number of those, those mandatory services and look at and explore agreements as to how those are funded. The most common ones that you will see in Neahill County are probably recreation, fire, and different agreements for transfer stations. So the county operates a number of transfer stations that urban residents have access to. They pay us for access to those. Some of them have transfer stations that our residents have access to. We pay them for access to those, to help support the operations of those, those facilities. So they can go both ways. The one that we have with, with everybody, and I'm saying everybody in the, in the urban sense of the word, is with the, with fire. So the county itself only has one fire department, that's Torrington. The rest of the fire departments that provide service to the county are actually services of other municipalities. So whether that's Chosu, Linden, Acme, Three Hills, Drumheller, those are, so we provide funding to those other urban municipalities to help support operations like their fire departments. The assisting in recreation funding, so helping to fund recreation facilities within the towns and villages that are utilized by county residents, is part, is really the core of the, the recreation component. And there's a number of others that are, I'm going to say they're more operational or administrative in nature. So with, we have generally good relationships with all of our, all of our urbans. And there are some things that we do that, that we help each other out. So as an example of one of the minor ones in transportation, we have, we have a grader in Linden. Linden pays us a monthly fee from October to March, I believe it is. And when we need to drop the blade on Main Street to help, help them plow that, we do. And they, they pay us for that. So there is a, there are some of those minor ones. I think there's roads in Carbon, Chosu, and here in Three Hills, that the county grades, that those municipalities pay us a fee to, to do that on their behalf. Acme, they do some snow clearing around some of our facilities, and there's a road on the outskirts of Acme that's technically theirs that we grade for them in return. So that way, we don't have, we're not spending other county dollars, having to send people to Acme to do snow clearing. They do that for us in return. So there's a number of those minor ones like that, whether that's peace officer services, weed inspection, that those entities contract us for, so they pay us to provide those services. But sorting all of that stuff out, looking at these, and basically working through this mandated process is what the, the purpose of the I C F committees are. And so we're, we're looking at those. Some of these have been largely completed. So we are up to, pretty much all of these are up for renewal right now. The major agreements with both Chosu and Acme have been completed. The others are still outstanding. The recent change that the province has made to this is that rural, bordering rural municipalities are no longer required to have an I C F if both parties agree that they're not required. And so the, the direction that I have currently is to query our neighbors. We'll get through, get through some of the, the election and orientation stuff, but to query our neighbors if they want to go through part of this process, which rural to rural is usually actually pretty easy and quick, or if we both just agree that we don't need an I C F agreement between the two parties, at which point there's a little bit of, this motions that council has to make. We inform the minister, we've both decided that, and, and we're good. To give an example of that is, you look at, one of our borders technically is the, the county of Stettler. We have no intermunicipal services with the county of Stettler. So our I C F agreement is basically a document that says, we've talked about it, we have no intermunicipal services, sign, sign. And so that's a candidate that we would approach them and say, are you, do we want to continue this? Or do we both agree we don't need this? And if we agree and they agree, then we inform the minister, said we've talked, we agree, we don't need it, and we're good. So previous, we weren't allowed to do that. Just recently, that legislation has changed to allow us to do that, but only with, only rural to rural. Rural, urban borders are still mandated and required to have an I C F in place.
Should be some discussion on this one. Everybody's, Jerry, Mr. Woodstock?
As both Acme and Linden are within my division, I would like to put my name forward to be on the I C F committees for Acme and Linden. I do understand that Acme's is done, but we may have the opportunity to do it one more time before this term is over. So I would put my name forward if that is council's wish.
We're doing each one, each one? Okay. Any discussion on that? Motion? Oh, pardon me.
If I can recommend, through you, Mr. Reeve, I can recommend to council, there are a number of motions in the R F D, but it would be good to have, if you're looking at the Acme one first, to have all of the appointees to Acme and do it in one motion. And then move on to all the appointees for Linden, then all the appointees for Three Hills, et cetera.
Sorry.
No worries. So we need another?
An alternate.
An alternate?
Well.
Yep. Oops. Mr. Woodstock?
We generally have two council members on. One is generally the Reeve, the other one is whoever's appointed, and then we have an alternate.
Is that what this is saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Olson?
Yeah, I'd let my name stand as the alternate then.
Okay. Any discussion? Or are we doing more? Are we just doing this one? Do you want to do them all, like?
Through you, Mr. Reeve, the, I think the recommended approach would be to deal with all of Acme at once, and then as one motion, and then move on to the next. And that way, for, for ease of reference, when you go back to determine who's on this committee, you have one clear motion to, to show you that.
We have a motion on that? Counselor Hoppins?
I make a motion to council appoint Reeve McCook and Counselor Woodstock to the Acme, Neahill County Intermunicipal Collaboration Framework Committee, and Counselor Olson as alternate, with these members serving on this committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Kerry Yanis?
I guess I would like to appoint myself as representative for the Carbon area, along with the Reeve.
Sorry about that, Merle. Okay.
I, I'll let my name stand as an alternate.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oh, motion?
I'll move that council appoint the Reeve, or Reeve McCook and Counselor Anderson to the Carbon, Neahill County Intermunicipal Collaboration Framework Committee, and Counselor Penner as alternate, with these members serving on this committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any discussion? All in favor? Kerry Yanis? Okay, the town of Drumheller, Neahill County. Need some?
As the area, larger and closest around the area, have a plan to serve.
Thank you. Alternate?
I guess I'm the next closest counselor, so I'll let my name stand.
Thank you for that volunteer. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, pardon me, motion, motion. I want to get out of here, right?
[laughing]
Oh, no, we can decide that. Counsel, Woodstock?
I would move the council appoint the Reeve and Counselor Anderson to the Drumheller, Neahill County Intermunicipal Collaboration Framework Committee, and Counselor Penner as an alternate, with these members serving on this committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Kerry Yanis? Village of Linden.
I would put my name forward to serve as the council member, as Linden is within my division, if the council so chooses.
I would let my name stand as alternate.
Okay. Motion?
I'll move that council point Reeve McCook and Counselor Woodstock to the Linden, Neahill County Intermunicipal Collaboration Framework Committee, and Counselor Olson as alternate, with these members serving on this committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any discussion? Mr. Penner?
So I just noticed the actual written motions just names Reeve as Reeve. And I'm guessing that the reason that is because this is a four-year term, and we're only electing Reeve year by year, so that it's the position of Reeve not necessarily.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just clearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Discussion? All in favor? Kerry Yanis? The Mountain View County one, do we have to, oh, discussion on that? Just a bit, Mr. Hogan?
Through Mr. Reeve, right now, just because that legislative change is basically brand new, right now, all of these other committees still exist. They might not in the future, depending on how those discussions go, and what I'm assuming is still going to be the will of council, to not have those if we don't need them. But there are, right now, they technically do still exist. And if one of the parties says they need to exist, then they have to. So we don't get to make that choice unilaterally.
So, we don't get to make that choice unilaterally. That's correct.
Counselor Olson?
Then, because I guess I border the Mountain View County, I would let my name stand as a council member for Mountain View, Nihail County.
Good. Alternate?
Don't matter.
Mr. Woodstock?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd put my name forward as being the alternate for Mountain View.
Any discussion? Mr. Hogan?
Just of a, of a note on this one, this, this particular committee actually has three primary members and an alternate, so each of the structures is a little bit, most of them, we've gotten down to having fewer members. There are still a couple that have more from the original setup of them, so. No, so this one does have three. The other one that, that we'll jump out to is when we get to, to Troschu, there was actually four on that one.
Mr. Woodstock?
So, I take my alternate thing back and put my name forward as being a council member for this committee.
Merle had his hand up, too. Maybe the alternate?
Yeah. We need an alternate, I believe. Are you putting your name forth, Merle? No? Mr. Penner?
Apparently, I'm the next closest counselor, so yes.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, pardon me. Motion? Mr. Hoppins?
I move that council appoint Reeve, Counselor Olson, Counselor Woodstock to the Mountain View County, Nihail County Intermunicipal Collaboration Framework Committee, and Counselor Penner as alternate, with these members serving on this committee until the organizational meeting after next municipal election.
Any discussion? All in favor? Kerry, you announce. Red Deer County. Mr. Hoppins?
I would volunteer for that role.
I can do that one as well.
We need two? Yep. Any discussion? Well, I thought we need another, is there three? Jerry?
I would put my name forward to be the alternate for the Red Deer ICF.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, sorry.
Oh.
Yep.
I would move that council appoint the Reeve, Counselor Hoppins, and Counselor Cunningham to the Red Deer County-Nihail County Intermunicipal Collaboration Framework Committee, and Counselor Woodstock as alternate, with these members serving on this committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Kerry, you announce. Rocky View.
So, I would let my name stand as alternate.
That's all we need?
Yep.
Yep. Discussion on that? Do you have a motion? Jerry?
I would move that council appoint the Reeve to the Rocky View County-Nihail County Intermunicipal Development Collaboration Framework Committee, and Counselor Penner as the alternate, with these members serving on this committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any discussion? All in favor? Passing, I guess? Or did you vote, Mr. Penner? Is your motion?
Sorry.
Nothing?
I did vote.
Okay. Town of Three Hills.
I'm happy to serve on the Town of Three Hills.
Okay. Counselor Olson?
I would stand as the alternate.
Need one more? We're done? Any discussion? Oh, pardon me. Any discussion on that? Motion?
I would move that council appoint the Reeve and Counselor Cunningham to the Three Hills Nihail County Intermunicipal Collaboration Framework Committee, and Counselor Olson as alternate, with these members serving on this committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Announce. Stettler County. Oh, did I miss Troschu? Oh. Pretty easy to miss that. Yep.
So, this is the one with three council members besides the Reeve?
Correct.
Okay.
Counselor Cunningham?
I'd be happy to serve on the Troschu ICF.
Counselor Hoppins?
I, too, would serve on that committee.
And one more counselor? Why so many? Mr. Hogan?
Through you, Mr. Reeve, to council, so a number of these, when they were set up, they looked to have additional members of council, so that it was more, the ICFs were an unknown process, and so, as an example, when we went through the first ICF iteration with Troschu, both municipalities decided to bring in a mediator to guide the process before it even started. And so, each municipality opted to put four members on there, so that they were, generally speaking, they weren't negotiating something in those meetings, and then coming back to council and having that tossed out the window. So, while they weren't there as a quorum of council, they were there acting so that there was enough of initiative that when the group decided on something, they had a good basis that that thing would be, that that thing would be approved. So, as we worked through the process and updating the ICFs, looking at changing those numbers is something that can be done. That's a negotiation with the, with the other party. And as an example, that's something we did with the Town of Three Hills. So, the Town of Three Hills, we originally had, I believe, four members each on that, on that ICF committee, and what we've done since is reduced that to be fewer members on there. So, there, a lot of it is how they were originally set up, just because they were, they were that new process, and there wanted to be some, some ability to know that what was being talked about could be, could be supported at the council level.
Counselor Wilson?
I would let my names down as the fourth counselor member on there, as to such time as we can discuss with the Town of Troschu, as to maybe limiting this number.
We're good there, then? Any, what's that? Any discussion on that? Need a motion?
I would move that council appoint the Reeve, Counselor Cunningham, Counselor Hoppins, and Counselor Olson to the Troschu-Nihail County Intermunicipal Collaboration Framework Committee, with these members serving on this committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any discussion? All in favor? Kerry, you announce. Are we going to have a break yet?
We should finish these three, shouldn't we?
Okay, let's go real quick here. Stettler County. Mr. Hoppins?
I would let my names down, stand with Stettler County.
Okay. Mrs. Cunningham?
I can do alternate for Stettler.
Do we need two or three? We need two. An alternate, yep. We got enough now? Any discussion? Motion?
Counselor Hoppins and Counselor Cunningham.
I move that council appoint the Reeve and Counselor Hoppins to the Stettler County-Nihail County Intermunicipal Collaboration Framework Committee, and Counselor Cunningham as alternative, as alternate, with these members serving on this committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any discussion? All in favor? Kerry, you announce. Starland County. Okay. Do we need one more?
I'll let my name stand as an alternate.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Need a motion?
I'll move that council appoint the Reeve and Counselor Anderson to the Starland-Nihail County Intermunicipal Collaboration Framework Committee, and Counselor Penner as alternate, with these members serving on this committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Kerry, you announce. You've got Wheatland County first. Yeah, remember taking a break.
I just see my voice is starting.
Yeah. Jerry?
I would like to place Counselor Penner on this committee. He doesn't have to be an alternate anymore.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that the council appoint the Reeve and Counselor Penner to the Wheatland, Wheatland County-Nihail County Interprovincial Collaboration Framework Committee, and Counselor Anderson as alternate, with these members serving on this committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any discussion? All in favor? Kerry, you announce. I think we take a lunch break? Lunch break? One way or the other, we're taking a break. At 11:57. Do I need to make a, do I make a motion, or are we good? We just call a recess at 11:58 for? We just call it recess at eleven fifty-eight for how long?
We'll come back in the session here at 12:45 from lunch. We finished off Wheatland County. We're going into the next area, right?
IDP.
IDP. Mr. Hogan.
To you, Mr. Reeve, to Council. Similar to the last item, intermunicipal development plans were a mandated, a mandated feature of local governance. The, we are required to have these with our, with our neighbors. With that being said, we do have rural to rural. They are optional. We were into a number of these before the province changed that when they first came in at the same time, when their mandatory component came in at the same time as ICFs. We had a number of them done. They then changed it to allow rurals to opt out. So we have opted out with a couple of our neighbors as well. So that's why on here you're not, you don't see necessarily all of the same borders and neighbors that we're appointing places to. So the, really, the IDPs themselves are planning documents. As I said, they're mandatory, and they're intended to basically govern, to provide reference, and to look after what we would refer to as the border areas between municipalities. So in our case, it's usually a mile, a mile to two miles. I don't know if we have any quite at two, but generally a mile from the, from the border. And it's a consultative. If we're doing, if something's happening in there, we have a duty to, to refer and to cons, and consult with the, the other municipality. So each of these, again, they need to be reviewed regularly. So these committees don't meet very often, but when they, same process, every few years when they need to be reviewed, these are the committees that, that look after those. So again, all of the, the list of motions, similar to the last ICF item, is just looking to go through and assign who is going to be on each of the, each of the intermunicipal development plan committees.
Thank you. All right, we're going to Acme, right? Acme-Nehill County. Mr. Woodstock.
I would like to volunteer my name to be a council member on the IDP between Acme and Nehill County if Council so chooses.
And I would let my name stand as well for the... Okay. That's all we need? Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, pardon me, pardon me, pardon me. I want to get out of here. Motion. Counselor Cunningham?
I'll move that Council Point Reeve and Counselor Woodstock to the Acme-Nehill County Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee and Counselor Penner as alternate with these members serving on this committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie DeNas. Carbon-Nehill County? Okay, thanks. We're all alternate. Yeah, it could be anybody, but...
It doesn't have to be...
Yeah. Any discussion? Motion?
I, I make the motion that Council Point, the Reeve and Counselor Anderson to the Carbon-Nehill County Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee and Counselor Penner as alternate with these members serving on the committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie, you know this. Drumheller-Nehill County. Counselor Anderson. Alternate.
I can serve as alternate for Drumheller.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, motion, 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 motion. Jury?
I move that Council appoint Reeve and Counselor Anderson to the Drumheller-Nehill County Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee and Counselor Cunningham as alternate with these members serving on this committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie DeNas.
Lindon-Nehill.
Mr. Woodstock.
I would like to put my name forward to be a council member on this intermunicipal development committee.
Counselor Anderson.
Ershah.
Counselor Olson?
I would serve as the alternate there.
Okay. Any discussion? Motion?
I'll make a motion that Council Point Reeve and Counselor Anderson to the Linden, sorry, no, not, Woodstock, sorry, to the Linden-Nehill County Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee and Counselor Olson as an alternate with these members serving on committee until organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie, you know this.
I would let my name stand as council member for Mountain View County.
Okay, alternate? Do we need an alternate?
I can do it, yeah.
Okay.
Put my name forward.
Discussion? Or motion?
I'll move that Council Point the Reeve and Counselor Olson to the Mountain View County-Nehill County Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee and Deputy Reeve, no, and Counselor Hopkins as alternate with these members serving on this committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Carrie, you know this. Red Deer County? Nehill? Counselor Hopkins? Anybody else? Mr. Woodstock?
I would put my name forward for the Red Deer and Nehill County.
Any discussion? Oh, do we need another one? Ah, shit.
There was two counselors and one alternate, right?
Yeah. I was the second, or Reeve, then myself, and Woodstock. But we still need an alternate.
I can do alternate for Red Deer.
Any discussion? Motion?
I moved it, yeah, I moved it to Council, appoint the Reeve, Counselor Woodstock, the Counselor Hopkins to the Red Deer County-Nehill, to the Red Deer County-Nehill County Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee and Counselor Cunningham as alternate with these members serving on the committee until this organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Rocket Arrow.
I'll let my name stand as alternate.
Okay, that's all we need?
Yeah. Oh?
Mr.?
I'm the alternate.
Sure.
Yeah, that's, yeah, sorry. Here, I've turned on my speaker. Now I'm the alternate.
There's still Wheatland and, and... Well, I think the Reeve is generally the, if I'm understanding that correctly, the Reeve starts that off, right?
Are we good? Yes.
Yeah.
Any discussion on that? Or motion, do we need a motion?
I move that Council appoint the Reeve to Rocky View County-Nehill County Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee and Counselor Woodstock as alternate with these members serving on this committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Carrie, you know this.
I would serve on the Three Hills Committee.
Okay. Need one more?
I would serve as the alternate on that committee.
Okay. Any discussion? Need a motion?
I move that Council appoint the Reeve and Counselor Cunningham to the Three Hills-Nehill County Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee and Counselor Olson as alternate with these members serving on this committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie, you know this. Troschew.
I will, Counselor Hopkins will volunteer for that role.
Okay, alternative?
I can serve as alternate on that.
Okay. Any discussion? Motion? Counselor Wilson?
I make a motion to the Council Point, the Reeve and the Counselor Hopkins to the Nehill, or to the Troschew-Nehill County Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee and Counselor Cunningham as alternate with these members serving on this committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie, you know this.
I would stand as a counselor. As a member, sorry, council member.
Alternative? Alternate?
I can do alternate on this one.
Okay.
For Wheatland.
Any discussion on that? A motion? Counselor Woodstock?
I would move that Council appoint the Reeve and Counselor Penner to the Wheatland County-Nehill County Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee and Counselor Cunningham as the alternate with these members serving on this committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie, you know this.
And I would let my name stand as alternate.
Any discussion? A motion? Counselor Olson?
I move that the Council appoint the Reeve and Counselor Anderson to the Sterland County-Nehill County Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee and Counselor Penner as alternate with these members serving on the committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie, you know this.
Counselor Hopkins will put his name in for Stettler.
Okay. We need an alternate? Counselor Olson?
I'd let my name stand as the alternate.
Okay. Any discussion? Motion? Mike?
So, three year, even cook, just to confirm with the Stettler one, we don't have an IDP with Stettler. We've opted out of that, but there is still a committee in case that comes up.
Okay.
Perfect. Doesn't mean I'm volunteering for something else.
Okay, so we have Richard.
Yeah, Hopkins.
So I would move that the Reeve and Counselor Hopkins, that Council appoint the Reeve and Counselor Hopkins to the Stettler County-Nehill County Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee and Counselor Olson as the alternate with these members serving on this committee until the organizational meeting after the next municipal election.
Any, any discussion? All in favor? Carrie.
Through, to the Reeve, the only thing that we have left is what is usually everyone's favorite motion is, that's the one. So if there's, I'll leave it with, with you, Mr. Reeve, to ask if someone wants to make that motion, and if, once that motion is made, then the meeting is done.
I'd love to make that motion, but you know I can't. Can I, the Council going in?
I'll move to adjourn the organizational meeting at 1:04 PM. I'll move to adjourn the organizational meeting at 1:04 PM.
All in, any discussion? All in favor? Carrie DeNas.
There we go.